Good evening, everybody. Welcome to a school committee meeting. Sounds like we've got noise. There we go. I think a motion to be convened in open session at 7:00. Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. McGee will call.
Chairman Wojciech.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Nata.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Second, I'd like to make a motion to seal the closed session minutes of the March 13, 2019 meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. McGee will call.
Chairman Wojciech.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Nata.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Would you please join me in standing for holding the signs to the pledge, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the midst of all with liberty and justice for all. Dr. McGee will call.
Chairman Wojciech.
Here.
Vice Chair Burke.
Here.
Mrs. Capwell.
Here.
Mrs. Nata.
Here.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Here.
I understand we have a presentation for a Hammond Middle School tonight? Is that... Yes?
Hi. Good evening.
Hi, Mady.
I do have a presentation that I created. It's a slideshow.
So you'd like us to go down there?
I need you to...
All right. All right. School committees, begin the stage and we'll now see the presentation.
Thank you.
I want to thank Ms. Renegaldo and all your staff and your ch... and your students in the school for what a great presentation. That's fantastic.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And did Dr. McGee do well in playing hockey or how did he do?
He didn't even know I took that picture.
Oh, all right.
No, I didn't.
He did.
Thanks again and please post it on the website. It'll be quick. Is there anyone who would like to address the school committee? If you'd like to do so, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Hearing none. Dr. McGee, recognition and announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When Sockit Education Department has been awarded a startup grant in the amount of $20,000,[413.03][413.03]$25,000 by Verizon to implement Project Leadaway Computer Science Program. Project Leadaway provides transformative learning experiences for pre-K through grade 12 students and teachers across the United States. Program creates an engaging hands-on slash environment and empowers students to develop in-demand knowledge and skills they need to thrive. It also provides teachers with the training, resources, and support they need to engage students in real-world learning. With this grant, Sockit Middle School students will have the opportunity to experience these hands-on computer science activities. The grant also includes professional development and software for teachers. I'd like to thank Dr. Remba for procuring the grant for the $25,000 for the middle school. A team of students from the Sockit area Career and Technical Center with advisor Deborah Bacon was selected... were selected to participate in a genuine adventure innovation challenge sponsored by United Healthcare on Tuesday, March 5. Teams from 13 schools across the state work with mentors to develop ideas to address wellness challenges in their schools, and they pitch their ideas to a panel of judges to compete for $1,000 worth of grants. Sophomore Jack Guido was a winner with his farming-for-future idea for farm field trips for students, which they learn about where food comes from and how to engage with local farmers. The full list of students who participated from the Sockit area Career and Technical Center are as follows: sophomores Deliza Reynoso, Joey Rulo, and juniors Anna von Thum and Justice Coyle. I'd like to recognize Mrs. Bacon and Jack who are here this evening. They're in the back. Want to congratulate you. Congratulations. Next, I want to just announce that our boys' basketball team, Sockit High School, is going... they are going to be playing on Saturday, this Saturday, at the Ryan Center at URI versus Cumberland. They're in the state semifinals for the state open basketball tournament. If they win that game, then they will be playing on Sunday at 4:00 also at the Ryan Center. So I want to wish all of our basketball players great luck on Saturday and the coaching staff as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have.
Any school committee member have any comments regarding the report? I'll place a motion to receive and place on file the superintendent's recognition and announcements. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let's go on to the approval of minutes. I'll make a motion to approve the February 27, 2019 closed session minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there... are there any corrections, deletions? Dr. McGee will call.
Chairman Wojciech.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Nata.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the February 27, 2019 open session minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Any corrections, deletions, changes? Nope. Dr. McGee.
Chairman Wojciech.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Nata.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Next, we will go to the consent agenda. I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Does any school committee member want to take any items out of water or discuss any items within the consent agenda? Dr. McGee will call.
Chairman Wojciech.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Nata.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Dr. McGee, work begins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have here in the audience Mr. Antonio Rodriguez, who is from Neighbor Works. And just to give you a very brief overview, two years ago, we had Neighbor Works, which partnered with an organization that comes to communities and they work with the residents of the community who may need home repairs. So the former school committee in the fall had already formally approved the... this organization coming and using in the middle school. What they do is they spend about a week or so there and it's used to house them. But Antonio is here and he can speak a little bit more specifically about exactly what happens during the course of that week or week and a half.
First of all, thank you.
This one?
Hello?
Maybe there's a switch? Is there a switch maybe? Now, please turn the thing off. No, it's okay. Let's turn it on.
I can just speak up. I mean, first of all, thank you for letting me come up here and speak to you guys. It's nice to meet many of you. This is the first time I've met you. Welcome from myself and from Neighbor Works. As Dr. McGee said, he summarized the program. We bring up to 400 youth here in the summer. This year's camp is from July 22 to the 26th. The campers start arriving on the 21st and the setup staff arrives a week prior on July 17th. In the packets in front of you on the left side, you'll see a summary of the economic impact of the program in the 2016 and 2017 programs, which only is going to continue to increase and we've already made a forward commitment with our partners to do a 2020 program. So it's just going to continue from there. On the left side of it, we just have some like positive press over the years, some before and after photos on the backside of that first sheet with the numbers, so you guys can see, you know, some of the impact that the kids are able to really have. Those before and after photos, there's a house that was painted. You can see... you can really see the difference. The wheelchair ramp under that. You know, these things are helping people. This program helps folks not only get out of their home literally, but in the case of this after 2016, she... long-term, she was going to need it and we were able to provide her with that service. If you guys have any other questions, my cards are on the left side in the bottom. You guys could reach out to me. My cellphone's on there, my email's on there. If you guys have any questions, any follow-up, I'm free to answer any questions.
Can you... can you tell us how many projects do you expect to do this year? When do our applicants have to submit their paperwork for you to consider their work?
Yep. So we started... we opened the application process on March 1st and since then, we're at about 140 applicants. We're closing the application at about 150, pretty close. And from that 150, we're going to choose 50 projects for 2019. So I'm pretty... I'm pretty excited and it just goes to show what... where the need is for the program to know that in the first like two weeks of us having it live and available for people to apply, it's almost... it's almost full.
And where do you... where do you kind of get the workers? Where do they come from?
So the volunteers, the high school youth for our camp, because it's considered a more difficult camp due to our housing stock and like the size of the painting job, they usually send juniors and seniors to high school. They come from around the country. First year, 2016, we had youth from nine different states. The second year, we had 11. We'll put and continue to increase that number because people really love our camp. We were the first ones to fill in 2017. We didn't... we weren't the first in 2019, but we're pretty close. Last time I checked, we were at about 376 kids, which means we're almost at capacity.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
Great.
Thank you so much. Fantastic.
We've already approved this.
I smell fruit. Thanks for going to the school committee reports. I'll begin with the facilities committee. Subcommittee Facilities and Safety Subcommittee met recently and we touched upon various topics. I'll just give you a thumbnail sketch of all of them. First, we talked about the school messenger parent messages in case of emergency lockdowns. And have that been... has that been sent to all parents at this point? Dr. McGee?
The actual text, we've created those.
Okay.
We're going to get those to the principals so that they have at their disposal in the event that they don't have time to carry their computer and draft up a letter.
Excellent. I know that was in flux at the time of the meeting, so good. The next thing we talked about is the transportation bid, a busing company. And we're going to be going out for RFP because I believe we have several issues with our ... with our current busing company. We've had incredible instances where they have really dropped the ball. And I'm going to some of those, but we do have people who can really share those with you. But the RFP will be prepared in April, I think April, and we'll be voting for that for the contract in May, if you expect. Okay. The other thing is that was brought up in the committee is we'll be considering the cost feasibility of reducing the minimum distance from the schools. I mean, we're going to explore distances ranging up to... if kids live up to two miles or one and a half mile, miles or one mile, so to see if how many kids and what's the cost of adding buses if need be on the routes to try to capture more kids on the buses because if some... if a child loses 1.48 miles and you have to live over two to get a bus, then... and instead, there's a lot of children that are there and we've got to consider that, especially when you think about the bad weather and our absenteeism and just trying to get... doing an op-arg to get more kids into the schools. So that's going to be coming. Next thing we talked about was the... were the elementary playgrounds. We were looking at, I know it's been worked, we look at drainage at Potie and Harris and we're looking at ADA compliance and Savoy, Potie, Harris, Coleman, and looking at funding, the funding that's available, but definitely ADA compliance is very important because we want to make sure all our children can use the facilities and that's very important for all of us. Facilities updating. We... we're looking at some grading at Potie. We voted tonight on getting two trucks for the maintenance department. And we need to look at the Savoy windows have been ordered and we're going to be looking at potentially a camera at the Career Center. Is it the pre-K?
The preschool.
The preschool.
Yes.
We also talked about the Career Center laboratories and water fountains to make them ADA compliant. Bathrooms, I think, have been made or there's one done and there's a... they're not done, so... All right. So that's going to be what we're looking to do. Water fountains have to be ADA accessible because a child's in a wheelchair or other ... other, you know, impediments that we've got to make sure that if you want to drink water, you can get it. And then we have McPhee, the building heating units, the ducts have been cleaned or we've gone off a contract, so we're going to be cleaning some ducts. We're going to put out ducts and water. Is that it? Is that what you're talking?
Yes.
Okay. I'm standing. And we have looked at the heating units because where we had orders at Potie, it seems like they've traveled to McPhee. So we can... we have to make sure that we eliminate that because right now, our administration, our central administration is no longer central. We have people at the high school, we have people in middle school, we have people elsewhere.
It's one of the high school and the middle school.
High school and middle schools. So that's where we... that's where we are now. So that's being done and we have, I don't know what the process or we're out into this at this point. I mean, that's moving along or...
So we had a meeting with RGV, the architects, and they brought in a mechanical engineer and they've looked at the heating units and they've got specifications as to what we would need to purchase to replace the current heating units. The current ones are approximately 20 to 25 years old.
Okay. So we've got some old equipment. HVAC units, as Mr. Perry will tell you, we've had issues throughout the district with these pieces of equipment and obviously they're starting to really fail, especially when you turn the heat on, because that's where the P10 kicks in and we've had issues with orders. And the last thing we talked about is the Trust Safety Committee that is going to be activated to deal with various personnel safety issues. Next meeting is scheduled for April 4th at 9:00 a.m. Is there a motion to receive and place on file the Facility Subcommittee report?
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Next, we'll go to health and wellness. Wellness.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just this past Monday afternoon, Mrs. Nata and I met in this building with several members of the Health and Wellness Committee. We had a very, very good meeting and we learned a lot about some wonderful activities that are going on in the Sockit School District related to health and wellness. One of the first things we talked about was the establishment of... and the youth in activities of a recess block program, which occurs in all our elementary schools. It's a program that began last year with a great activity at Savoy School with the governor and a lot of other folks came part in. And obviously, all our elementary schools with the teachers who are trained to run this recess block program. So that was really exciting to see and hear about. We also have a local food ambassador program going on, working with Farm Fresh Rhode Island and other farms in the area and trying to sponsor local, local food to our students and also introducing them to some foods they may not be familiar with.
That's great.
So that program has been very, very successful and a lot of enthusiasm and excitement around it. We also have a program called Share the Food at the high school. Mrs. Nata, that was called Share the Food.
Share.
There's a box in the high school. Sharing table. That's right. Sharing table. And there's a box in the high school. So for example, if a student doesn't need his apple, he can put the apple in the box. Someone else who wants an extra apple can come by and pick it up. Food we offer... so food is distributed and it doesn't go away as much as possible. But one of the reasons why I mentioned that is we're one of the first school districts to use this program and to incorporate the program into our cafeteria. And we happened to get the attention of Channel 10 Barbara Morris Silva, all right, who came last week and filmed a segment of Mrs. Shallow. Shallow, Mrs. Shallow, Dr. McGee and several students. And that episode, that program, that segment will be on a week from this Thursday. Channel 10 on her health... on her health program. So I encourage everybody to tune in to Channel 10 a week from this Thursday and watch the program in action at our high school. So that sounds pretty good. And also that we have another program that's in the beginning stages, Physical Health Education Advocacy, connected to the American Heart Association Voices Campaign. Dr. Remba garnered us a $5,000 stipend for this program and I think we're only three schools in the state, three districts of the state were able to get this particular program. And we get some plans for this program coming up later in the spring. We plan maybe a community event surrounding a dinner for families and exhibition of various aspects of Heart Association materials and physical education. We're also going to have a conjunction with the dinner. So it was exciting. This is only our second meeting of the year of bringing back the Health and Wellness Committee and it was exciting to hear about all these activities going on in our district around this area. And I believe, I think I covered all the most, most exciting things. Mrs. Nata, do you agree?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Any comments, questions? Vice Chair Burke. I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the Wellness Subcommittee report. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, Mrs. Kapiskas, would you talk to us about CILAC?
On behalf of you. Well, the monthly meeting of the CILAC occurred last Thursday, March 7th, here at the Sockit Middle School at Hamlet, room 124, at 6:30. You know, business we covered, an update with regard to the Sockit Middle School Behavior Program. And we anticipate there will be a presentation on behalf of that program at our April meeting. We discussed the Honor Society induction at the high school and the inclusion of out-of-district students. Dr. Sullivan advised us that she would be reporting back to support information with regard to that. The Parents Support Groups, we... excuse me, monthly meeting for March will be on March 19th at Blackus Bulldog Tavern in Smithfield. That is a pay-per-own way event. We don't discuss special ed issues unless they come up incidentally. It's just a chance for the special ed parents to get together and talk. Under new business, we discussed the Dear to Dream Program, which is running at URI this year. It's on May 26th from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. It's a program run by the Department of Health and we have students who attended, special ed students. It's student-led and it's intended to train, to teach students to advocate for themselves, that they have the ability to advocate for themselves, that they do have a bright future if they do choose to go that direction. Unfortunately, this year, it's unlikely we'll be sending students unless parents participate in transporting their students and remaining with them because as a result of Work to Rule, the day runs from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., which is outside the Work to Rule time. So as a result, the only way our students will be able to participate is if parents bring them. And we're hoping to have staff be there for part of the day in accordance with the Work to Rule requirements. We also discussed the social-emotional learning curriculum and how that's being incorporated into all of our schools in references made to the Coleman presentation at our February 13th school committee meeting. And we were providing information as to how it's being introduced school by school across the district. We talked about an issue that is on the forefront of a lot of news in education in Rhode Island for PRRI and multiple pathways. And I'm concerned, of course, with on special education students accessing these pathways and programs. We're asking particularly questions about the Sockit area career and technical area career and technical school to make sure that special ed students will be included in their programs as well as the P10 problem... the P10 program. We were also discussing the issues around out-of-district students being able to access these multiple pathways. There were issues with regard to location and transportation. A lot of times, parents would have to be responsible to transport out-of-district students to programs at the Oak School, for example, but we're working on that. And we also discussed whether or not our students, special ed students, are given access to the internships being offered to rising seniors. Those of us students who are in the summer between junior and senior year through the governor's workforce where these students are going out and doing summer internships under a program called Skills for Rhode Island Future. Sockit was a hub of the northern region in trying to reach out to these students. There are a very small number of internships, maybe 12, 15 kids total. You can hear information about it on our website. We also talked about... talked about the QXRI initiative regarding Reimagining High School. There's going to be a discussion, a representation at the St. Justice Veterans Hall on Wednesday, March 20th, the week from tonight from 4:30 to 7:00. Sockit has not made a final term... Wensaco has not made a final determination as to whether or not they're going to jump on board with this program, but they are going to the investigation meeting as am I. And if you intend to go, you have to RSVP to ride. Their presentation by Grace Lang, who's a speech language pathologist, and Andrew Beating, who's a social worker at the career technical school. Regarding the social skills program that's been developed over the last one and a half years that has shown a surprising success rate, they made us do some of the activities they did with the students. It was a lot of fun, we got to play with Play-Doh, so we enjoyed that. I reported that as a liaison to the school committee, from the school committee, as to our last agenda, any issues that impacted on special education. The chair reported that as to the formation of the community action board at Harris as a comprehensive school. I provided as a representative from the RICAC an update as to the RICAC and advise everyone who might be interested that they are now seeking new members and the application is open on my website. The next C-LAC meeting is on Thursday, April 4th, right here in middle school at Hamlet, room 124. Please enter through door 3 in the rear closest to Hamlet Avenue. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mrs. Kapiskas. Does any school committee member have any questions, comments, far from our C-LAC liaison?
Nope.
I'll make a motion to receive and place on file, Mrs. Kapiskas' report, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Conferences and discussions, Dr. McGee, technology update.
Mr. Nataria. Good evening. So as you have before you, as we do every one, we'll be updating technology, there's a memo and there's a few work order reports. So the first of them is saying, we'll go with the work order reports that the technology department is currently working in the process of preparing to deal with the state assessments. As you may not be aware, these state assessments are electronic, so we're in the process of prepping all the Chromebooks, rolling out the software, making things ready so that when the timeframe comes, we'll be all set. In addition to prepping for the state assessments, we are also on the data side, we're going on current data uploads for the March snapshot, that's our state aid for the funding for for the next school year, so that's an important issue, we'll make sure we're getting every dollar, we're, we're entitled to that for the quarter process. Onto the reports, as you can see, incident summary report for the last 30 days, we've completed, closed out 235 work orders, 32 new have come in, 17 are resolved, which we'll go over to close in a couple of weeks. Speed are in progress, six were declined, four assigned, one parts are on order and one we're waiting for a vendor. So it's been a very busy month, but, like, I just listed out previous to this. Incident statistics, we are still hovering around three, three days, three days, 16 hours in terms of the work orders. It's a busy time of year, this creeps up around here, usually comes back down to about two days on average to respond to, to a work order. And again, if you're going to contribute, this, it might be a larger project, which makes that, that work time bump up, but I kind of can see it keep it around two days.
Sure.
And the final report for technology, the case of customer satisfaction over the last 30 days, as you can see in the bars, everything in green is, people are satisfied, yellow is where they're not satisfied. As you can see there, there are two unsatisfied employees for the week of the 25th and two for the week of March 4th, one for the week of February 11th. I did look into them, a couple of them just had miscommunication, a couple of them, they were just not satisfied with the response because they wanted something that doesn't, doesn't adhere to our policy.
Okay. And good reports. Mr. Natariani of Diddlewood Technology, today we had an internet, was it the internet that went down?
Yes.
I mean, I knew sent an email, what was the cause resolution of that?
So that was actually a statewide issue. The internet was down, not just for us here in Wensaco, it was down for Bryan University, Princeton Public School, there, there are many districts. There are hospitals and colleges in the state that use the same internet service provider, which is called Ocean, a consortium which we belong to, they, we've had a power outage in one of their facilities and it was a critical point and you needed every system to, they weren't able to keep the internet up and running for a period.
Okay. Anyone else? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file, technology update, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, facilities update, Dr. McGee?
Mr. Natariani.
So, so this evening, because we had the facilities subcommittee update, there were no other factors to put on here, touch upon topics, but I did include the reports for you this evening, keeping in mind that based on the snowstorms and fee and several other factors, you're going to see that we, over this period of time, the work order system is even responsive more than we would see because they're getting pulled away constantly to respond to emergency. So as you can see, the first one is the incident summary report, there were 98 new work orders that came in, 27 were closed and 11 more were resolved. So that's not too bad, but again, factoring in with the weather and all the different things, apparently I'd like to see more than new ones creep down. The second is the incident statistics, and as I say always, I always include it, but it says it takes the average of 17 days to respond to a work order. I think our response times a lot quicker than that, but this just reflects average work orders in the system, again, not any of the recent emergency responses. With age of our buildings, there are quite a few emergency responses.
And those don't take forever?
Absolutely, if the phone call made and we just dispatch one, you know, tell them they're putting the work orders, you know. And the third report is the customer satisfaction report. As you can see, green is good, as we discussed on the other report, yellow is where someone's dissatisfied, there was one dissatisfied concern out here and it was a miscommunication with one of our custodians that, but aside from that, there isn't much response back, but there were six, please. Please. Okay. That concludes the report.
Just want to comment on facilities, we had mentioned brine, that we purchase the brine from the city, is that true? Is that something such we dump on the buildings and the property? It seems, why would that be covered? And it's a question that maybe we need to pursue.
Well, absolutely. I'm not sure exactly how that's going to work, we've never, we've never done that here before. I imagine we'll just buy it directly from the city, I think that's kind of how I've understood it. I don't know exactly how, would we pick it up down there, when we need it, would they store it? There's a, I have a few questions.
I'm just wondering, because we've seen, you know, during, right after the snowstorm, I saw the city employees shoveling or, I don't know if those were all our people that were snowblowing at Wensaco High, was that any of the city folks or was that all our folks?
We, we maintain the campuses here in the city. The only situation where it may be the city employees, where there are either front sidewalks on Cass Avenue.
That's what I mean.
But I know we, we tend to kind of work with that, but as a general rule, we shovel out the sidewalks surrounding all of our, our, our schools here. In terms of the brine question, I, I would imagine that we're going to, we're going to purchase the brine from the city, it would be something they would allow us to have, much like we don't get the rock salt and the sand from the city, we purchase our own.
Okay. Okay, very well, thank you. Any other comments from the committee? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file, facilities report, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very much. We have no unfinished business, business, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the revisions to Wensaco School Committee Subcommittee assignments, is there a second?
Second.
You'll notice we've attached the revised schedule just to make it more convenient for work schedules, et cetera. Currently, so with the new, what I'm, what we're proposing, I'm proposing is that the subcommittees, they just files the assignments. The curriculum committee with, I would sit on it and so will Glenn. Health and Wellness will be chaired by Chair Burke and Mrs. Nato. Facilities will be me and Ms. Gaffwell. Technology will be Mr. Burke and Ms. Gaffwell. Policy will be chaired by Chair Burke and Mrs. Kapiskas. And finance will be me and Mrs. Nato. The parent advisory council will be held by Ms. Gaffwell and C-LAC will be Mrs. Kapiskas. Any thoughts, questions, comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Everybody's got three, and I have the truth. Is that?
You feel like that?
Yeah, I really feel like that.
It's just the way.
It worked out?
Yes, a discipline, yes.
Okay.
It's true, it's just the way it worked out, but I must say, if you look at the liaisons, just because they have three of the parent advisory council, I think each quarterly a best.
Oh, really? They store it each once a month?
I don't think they actually do right now. C-LAC needs once a month and that's, that's been ongoing for several years, I believe.
C-LAC?
Yes.
If I may comment with regards to the path though, I don't know whether or not the committee is aware, that the meeting next, not next Thursday, Thursday after on the 26th, Tuesday 26th, will be the final meeting of the Wensaco path as the leadership of past students graduating this year, and no one, no parents have stepped up with the willingness to take over the path. So as of right now, the March 26th, that will be the final meeting, there will be no more path.
Then it won't be the only person, too, at that point.
Well, I was going to say that if somebody needs a backup in one of those liaison committees and they can't, you know, I'd be willing to help.
Is there a rule about that if we're not assigned, Joe, is there, is there a rule that I can't make a meeting, but it would be great to have to, can I, I reach out to Mrs. Nato, to, or Mrs. Gaffwell to sub in? Is one to roll into?
The concern, the concern is that there are open meetings ahead.
Right.
With two committee members there, that's fine.
So it's not, doesn't matter, we're just assigning it for our own good reason, for the own. So, Mrs. Nato, you could be on deck.
Okay.
Yes, that's right, I'll do that. Okay. Dr. McGee, local.
Chairman, Board J.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss the appointment of a special education chairperson, is there a second?
Second.
Dr. McGee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to recommend Mr. William Colley for the position of special education chairperson. Mr. Colley has an extensive background working with students with behavioral and academic needs. Graduated from Boston University with a bachelor's science degree in education, went on to obtain his master's degree from the University of Texas at Austin and then received a certificate of advanced study of education with an education administration degree from the University of Alabama. Mr. Colley has more than 25 years of experience working with children and youth with educational, social emotional and behavioral issues. He has worked in a number of states as a special education teacher, behavior specialist and a special education director. His experience across a variety of settings has provided him with direct knowledge of the programs and services across educational and behavioral continuums, both in and out of district. As a special education director for the past nine years, Mr. Colley has, has been responsible for planning, administering and directing the educational programs with the Alternative Learning Program, ALP. He was also required to ensure compliance with all local, state and federal laws and create a safe, orderly environment that encourages students to take responsibility for their behavior and creates high morale among staff and students. In that position, he worked with students with severe and profound behavioral challenges. He's also supervised other staff members in resolving problems, maintained educational records and conducted educational evaluations of students. Based on his record of accomplishments, I highly recommend Mr. Colley in the position of special education chairperson. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Dr. McGee, or maybe Dr. Sullivan, what is exact, what will his responsibilities be if he's going to be a chair, a chair of secondary?
He's got, he's got to oversee special education in the, he's going to oversee special education at the elementary level and then partly at the middle school and what he's going to do at the middle school is oversee the behavioral programs.
Okay, okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Thank you.
Mr. Nato?
Is it a new position?
No.
No?
No, it's not. It's a position that was unfilled. It's, it's a budget position that was, that was created. We recently filled a similar position, but at the high school. So this was the second of those two positions that was not built. So, so yes, it is, it is a, not a new position.
Okay.
Anyone else? Dr. McGee, local.
Chairman, Board J.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Is Mr. Colley here?
He has, one of his children had an event tonight, so he's at that.
We still need to congratulate.
Good job.
Next, I'll make the motion to discuss and approve to make the Governor Portier and Citizens Memorial Elementary School a single campus. Dr. McGee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So at the last school committee meeting, there was a discussion around consolidating Citizens Memorial Elementary School and the Governor Portier Elementary School. And we, we didn't officially take a vote and that's one of the, one of the things that the school committee must do before we can go to the Department of Education with that request so that both schools are one. As I said at the last meeting, we recognize both of those schools as one campus. This would just officially, in the eyes of the Department of Education, be recognized as, as one school.
Sure. Does anyone?
Mr. Chairman, before you, before you, I object to your motion.
Thank you. Very well, thank you.
I have a question, in terms of staffing, are there two principals or one principal?
There's one principal.
And then an assistant?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
So you've eliminated the one principal position?
Well, we actually did that a few years ago. When, when we combined the campus under the administrative leadership, there, there were two principals, one principal for citizens and one principal for Portier. And what we did at the time to try to increase the continuity and the consistency on the campus, because one school is a primary, pre-k through grades two, and the other school is grades three through five, we decided to have one principal oversee the other campus and have an assistant principal as well.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else?
Based on what we heard last time, it seemed like there were only upsides and no notable downsides to this, so unless anything has changed from that point, anyone wants to talk about?
It seems like a natural fit to do this because they've been operating as one campus, two schools, but really one administration, set of administrators. Dr. McGee, McGee local.
Chairman, Board J.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
It's absolutely comfortable looking to the call. What's the school we call? Citizens Portier.
Oh, yeah, citizens.
Portier citizens.
Yeah.
Do you have your shirt on? Somebody had a shirt. Let's see the shirt.
Elementary, you get that's right?
Yes.
Excellent, great. Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the purchase of the study same program. Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. McGee, thank you, Mr. Chairman. At the last curriculum subcommittee meeting, this was on the agenda and the, the discussion was around middle school specifically, grades six through eight. The fact that although we have standards that our English teachers are teaching towards, what we didn't have is we didn't have a consistent curriculum that was aligned to those common core standards. So Mrs. DiRiso, a couple of years ago, brought in this particular vendor and they did a presentation and we made the determination as, as a district and both middle schools to pilot this program in, in grades six to eight. So it's, it's a, it's a reading writing program, it combines the, the two areas of literacy. It, it focuses on reading, writing, listening and speaking. And what this does is this creates a coherent curriculum with coherent resources for our grade six through eight teachers at the middle schools. It, it also provides some nice scaffolding for students, which is differentiating the instruction so that when students have reading text, that it's, it's based on their reading levels. So teachers have an opportunity to go into sort of a, a library, if you will, of text to utilize with their students who are at various levels, including students with special needs as, as well as some English language learners. So one of the things that Mrs. DiRiso with the English department at the middle schools did is they conducted a survey earlier this year to, to see their did is they conducted a survey, um, earlier this year to, to see their, um, you know, how they felt, um, you know, how, what they felt it was, it was successful for them and their students. Um, she's also had anecdotal winning conversations with the, um, the English language arts staff at both middle schools. So what we're looking to do now is we're looking to purchase the, um, the Study Sync program beginning next year. And, um, you have here the, the quote, and, um, that's, that's, that's my, if you have any specific questions about the program, um, Mrs. DiRiso is here, and, um, she may answer those questions for you.
Mr. Chairman, my question is where's the, uh, payment? Is it a time one payment or the local?
It's local.
Sixty-six thousand dollars?
Correct.
Spread over three years.
Two years?
Spread over three years.
Three years.
That, that's going, I, I would imagine, Mr. Perry, that it's gonna be in our next budget? Or is that gonna be in progress?
Absolutely, yeah.
It's gonna be in progress next year?
Correct.
Okay.
Right, so just to, just to clarify, the, the payment is one lump sum, but the, the product is four, a three-year program?
And I'll spread the, we'll spread the expense out over three years.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Now, does this replace, uh, some other program at this point? Is it, I mean, obviously kids have been reading, so...
They, they have, yes. We, we didn't, we didn't have any really of, of, a formal program. Um, we, over, over the years, we, we, sort of teachers have utilized sort of their, their own resources that they, um, accessed that will align to the common core standards.
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chair Burr.
Um, obviously, the, the eighth grade takes some state tests, the RICAS. I think the RICAS. This program, is it, is it tied to improving the RICAS scores?
So, so it is, it's, it's aligning common core state standards, which is what the RICAS is aligned to as well.
So we would expect to see increases in the test scores?
Um, we, we are hoping to, yes.
Any, anyone else? Dr. McGee, local.
Chairman Bojek.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burr.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. NATO. Mrs. Kaviskas.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to discuss and approve, uh, the electronic graduation portfolio handbook. Oh, I missed one. Um, I'll make the motion to discuss and approve the, the Richard Picture program. Dr. McGee, you have a second? Do we have a second?
Second.
Dr. McGee. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, so what we have here this evening, um, Mary Capirelli, who is Assistant Principal at Hunsocket High School. Um, let me, again, as, as I did with, uh, uh, ready them with the, um, Study Sync, let me just sort of give you a little overview of, of the, um, Richard Picture and the IOP process. This also was discussed at the last, um, curriculum subcommittee meeting. So, in, um, this was part of the Rhode Island Secondary Regulations. School districts, um, by the 2021 school year are gonna have to have, um, what's called, um, an individual learning plan for all students in grades six through twelve. Uh, there are some districts that, that currently have an IOP, as, as it's typically called. Um, we are one district that does not have one. So what an IOP is, is it, it's, it's an electronic platform. It's a, it's a depository, um, and it's also a, a platform where students can, can access, have access to resources, um, for things like, um, when they're looking to, um, determine what type of a career they might wanna go into, um, to determine ultimately when they get to high school and even earlier, um, if they, if they're choosing to maybe go to a college. It, it gives them valuable information about majors that are out there, colleges that could, uh, be potential, um, institutions that they attend based on what their, what their, you know, their interests are. It, it also is a depository where students can, can upload artifacts, uh, work that they've, that they've done over the course of their high school career. And as I said, it starts in the sixth grade and it goes through, um, grade twelve. So what we did is, or I should really say what, what, um, Mrs. Capirelli, um, she spearheaded a group, uh, from the district that went, and they were actually part of, of a, um, kind of a consortium of, of other schools. And they, they researched the different, um, platforms that are available to school districts. So they met with a variety of vendors. Uh, Richard Picture was, was one of the vendors that they met with. And, uh, Richard Picture is actually a, a local, uh, company here in, in Rhode Island. Um, I, I don't know, um, Mary, if you wanna speak a little bit about what Richard Picture will offer our students?
Sure. Thank you, Dr. McGee, and the school members of the school committee. Um, as Dr. McGee, uh, spoke about, the IOP is a formal way for our kids to, um, learn the skills for planning. So there are interest inventories at the beginning of their first session that help kinda guide them towards what careers might be available. And then there are a series of lessons along the way. Uh, RICAS requirements that the kids engage in that program at certain times during the year. Richard Picture we selected after looking at the four approved vendors. Um, they all had the needs survey requirements for the RFP, be able to read the information, be able to speak to our Skyward, um, student information system. And so we looked at all of them, right in that, um, student, in that learning group about the IOPs. They had provided opportunities for our entire team, members of the middle schools, some folks from the central administration and the high school, our guidance counselor, to go and look at them all, speak to the, um, representatives. And then we all came together and discussed the pros and the cons. We put out a Google Doc to get, survey everyone to see what their preferences were. And across the board, Richard Picture rose to the top for a few reasons. Um, we are new to this, where there are other districts that have done this kind of work, using an electric platform for portfolios and for IOPs. And we felt that Richard Picture gave timely support to us. Some of the other bigger programs that may look like they had, um, a smaller per pupil fee, there were webinars that were kind of, um, they used for any district without being specific to what the needs might have been. Richard Picture provided face-to-face. We asked them to come in and speak to us, they did a few times, and answered all the questions that our IT department had, that our guidance counselor had and that administration had, and satisfied what we felt were gonna be the needs of the, the more with school department. Um, so we've talked to them, we negotiated where we'd start out with just our ninth grade, where they're not charging us for the per pupil fee, just to do some setup, which means they're taking our student information and creating a platform there. And then we're gonna be training our guidance counselors and our success one-on-one teachers at the high school, so that we can start with just our ninth graders this year. I don't think we have any questions about it.
What kind of programs were we using, um, part, uh, at this point?
Uh, at the high school, they were using College Board, um, to, to utilize, um, you know, college, um, interests for more students, um, and some of the other vendors that we, that we looked at were extremely expensive and they were sort of the Cadillac of the vendors. But what we found is that there are some things that we can access through the College Board and not have to, had to look to purchase a much more expensive platform, uh, where Richard Picture, um, provides what we need, feels that our students need, um, to be successful. And then we can use other types of resources, um, for videos and, and different, and different types of, of resources for our students and for our guidance counselors.
And any of those things can be uploaded into that system. You know, we can help build it so that it's individualized to us. As our students find success in various opportunities, leadership opportunities, they can upload those proficiencies or badges right here. So it's almost, it's, um, it's their experience in school and how they can continue to go back to it, look at where they planned for the future, how well did they do, what strategies did they identify, how well have they moved towards reaching their goals? So it really is a, a very structured, very deep dive in how can our kids see the skillset for planning.
Anyone else?
Just to make sure that, Chairman, that I understood, so the, the IOP is a mandatory piece, right? So there were four vendors, it's mandatory, we have to do it, we needed to find the best vendors that was wanting to work. Is there a way that they can, and is there, I guess, is there a plan for us to get reported back to on the extent in which the students are utilizing all of the different areas, right? Because it sounds like it's pretty robust, whether or not the robust nature of it, all components are mandatory, but I think it would be interesting to understand how it's being utilized. Is it being maximized and we can make sure that there's some stuff out there that it's not being maximized and utilized to its fullest extent that we make sure that it is?
One of the reasons why we felt that Richard Picture was a good platform for us is because of the opportunity that tailors the reports based on what questions you want answered. So as we start to build it, this year with the ninth graders, next year our plan is to use ninth and tenth graders and the eighth grade at the middle school. And then the next year, when we're to be in full compliance, we'll have all the middle school and all the high school kids onboard with it by the time that RICAS requires that. But at any point, we can go in and we can pull reports to see how often the kids are going in to access the system, how they looked at what the interest inventory results were and identified strategies or goal-setting opportunities. So there are lessons filtering in and we can pull reports and kinda control that data. And we have the resources of folks that ideas consulting, the company that's developed this platform and problems to come up and basically sit beside us if we need that, so.
I think what Mrs. Capwell said is very important. I think we need to, the committee needs to see periodic reports on, 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 on the, the usage rate and the experience rate and how well this is going. We'd like to see that.
Yes. So I think that as we, we start with our, you know, basically our pilot, our ninth graders, and, um, get them going, then we'll have some opportunity to see how, how they're interacting with it. You know, hopefully by the end of this year, at least before we start with, you know, extending on it for next year, so.
Is this another, uh, three-year program that we're paying for?
Yeah, both, both these programs are spread out over three years. Actually, uh, there's only gonna be six thousand seven hundred fifty dollars in expense getting the books this year. Uh, during the evening, ninety-four, ninety-five thousand dollars is gonna be spread out over the, the fall of three years.
How much?
Around a hundred, all, both, I was talking about both the programs together. Almost around a hundred, a little over a hundred thousand dollars. I'm sorry about that.
Why, it's not even a picture, okay?
Yeah.
It's one program.
Yeah.
Okay. It's like thirty-seven in total for Richard.
Correct, correct. Sixty-seven hundred, we'll have the books now. And, uh, back to Study Sync, we won't be launching until next year, so, uh, it'll just be prepaid expense on the rest of the year.
Right, exactly. Anyone else? Dr. McGee, local.
Chairman Bojek.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burr.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. NATO.
Yes.
Mrs. Kaviskas.
Yes.
Number six. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Uh, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the electronic graduation portfolio handbook. Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. McGee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think Mrs. Hughes is in the back. Would, would you mind coming to the podium? So again, this, this was a, uh, an agenda I had at the curriculum subcommittee meeting.
Yes, I was.
And, um, so, quick, very quick summary is, um, Hunsocket High School and Hunsocket Area Career and Technical Center, um, have put together, um, an electric portfolio for students to, um, collect basically, um, their portfolio, um, artifacts that they will need, uh, to graduate ultimately from high school. Uh, the number of, of artifacts or pieces that students, uh, collect, collect, currently are eighteen, that's gonna go down to six, but, um, they will, they will actually be placed in this electronic portfolio where students, as they used to, have to have a thick binder and collect hard copies of everything. Um, this will be a, a much more, um, efficient, and not just efficient, but certainly it, it will be much more efficient for students to collect their, um, the work that they need when they produce it for their graduation. So, but, um, Mrs. Hughes can, can explain the process and what the portfolio will look like.
Good evening. So this really is, you know, RICAS determined that each student needs a performance-based assessment to graduate, that's in addition. Many high schools choose portfolio or senior project or capstone. Um, we at Hunsocket High School have always had the portfolio piece, um, for that performance-based assessment, and it's been in paper. As we move towards, um, 21st century skills and presentation skills and what students will need in college and to graduate, um, we wanted to move this from that paper binder to a digital presentation. So it's, um, the learning expectations have been all along as part of the curricul, which drive our curriculum. There are six learning expectations from effective communicator, problem solver, critical thinker, researcher, art and technology, um, and those stay the same and drive our curriculum. So the students will choose a artifact or a piece of work or a project in different content areas or electives or even in the career and technical center, which align to that specific standard, the ones that they're most proud of, maybe they show more, more, uh, growth from. And they choose those particular pieces of work to go into this digital portfolio. What we have done is we've taken these two components, which is the actual paper book, put it into the digital, um, the digital slideshow, and also had them work on their presentation simultaneously. Before it was that they had this binder and then they wrote these note cards and, um, just kinda spoken to it for about six to ten minutes. Now, this is built into this digital presentation which they can personalize. We extended it to talk about their high school experience, talk about their, what they've done in high school that has really set them for their future, um, and what their, what their plans are looking ahead. It's a wonderful way to personalize them and, um, we're seeing, as we're going through the validation process currently with our seniors, it's amazing what the students have been able to share as far as their experiences, their struggles, their obstacles, along with their work. So it's really, uh, it's exciting. So, um, the handbook itself just had it to be revision, had to go through this revision process because now it's not paper, it's digital. So it's really all the same, it's just the digital piece that had to be added to that. And, uh, right now, we are going, going through the process, looking at the students have done a wonderful job of the personal identification piece. As a matter of fact, we'd really love to invite each and every one of you to come April ninth and maybe to, um, see a presentation from the students. And we'll be sending out a formal invitation if you can take that time out in the morning. It's an exciting day, it's the, I think, um, equally as important to graduation, the students come dressed professionally, ready to present, um, proud of the work that they've done, and, you know, speak to, um, validators and judges about their, um, not only their pieces, but also their experience. Any questions?
What time and地点?
So they'll be presenting from eight AM till about eleven-ten, so when I'll, I'll send the invitation out to you. It would be great for you to come maybe around seven-fifteen, seven-twenty, just to kinda review what the day will look like. I can show you the rubric by which they're going to be assessed by and kinda give you your, um, assignments. And this particular, um, year, we are going to be housing all of the presentations in the Career Center. This is the same simultaneous, the day that what we do with EFTs and FTEs for, um, the other students, so they'll be at, um, high school. So I'll send that all in the invitation. We'd love to have you come and, um, sit in on some of these presentations.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Any comments? Dr. McGee, local.
Chairman Bojek.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burr.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. NATO.
Yes.
Mrs. Kaviskas.
Yes.
Next, I'm gonna turn, uh, the floor to, uh, Mrs. Kaviskas to talk about policy development.
These are all gonna sound married because I intercooperated and raised them for a good amount for a prior meeting, but, um, I wanted to raise issues about policy and get appointed to the Policy Subcommittee.
Yes.
So as a result, we will be revisiting these issues in the Policy Subcommittee. Uh, I think that we need to update or at least develop and review our policy with regard to the responsibilities and duties of staff in response to student violence, whether it be in terms of training, risk of injuries, um, whether there should be a crisis team in place and how all that occurs. Um, it's also the intent to, as part of that, to discuss the issue of whether or not, um, student cameras, which are used to record these incidents of student violence, should result in disciplinary issues for the students themselves who might videotape them, because the concern is the students who are filming are actually encouraging the violence. Um, and also, I have some questions that I raised about the use of these videos in student and staff disciplinary matters, because we have no way of knowing whether or not those videos have been altered in any way, as opposed to the school, um, closed camera system where there might generate video with regard to student violence. And the last issue that I raised, that I definitely would like to discuss on that committee is an issue, because this is developed, and although it would be faced in here in district, but it's been faced by other districts in the state. It's a policy with regards to possession and or use of medical marijuana on school property. There are many students who suffer some seizure disorders who walk in, have a permit for use of medical marijuana. And the law kind of governs with regard to how you get those permits. But there's no such thing that I wonder over that I can find in the statute that talks about a prescription for medical marijuana that would compel medical staff in schools to distribute it or administer it. I think we need to address the issue, because if we haven't faced it yet, it's coming. Because it's common in other districts. And I don't think we have anything in place, at least I haven't seen anything in place. So, those are the first three issues I think that we need to look at. My next question would be, who, Mr. Chairman, is how we know about scheduling Policy Subcommittee meetings? Because I don't know how that happens.
It's, you know, you would call Mrs. Blais. And she will schedule it and will identify the people that will be on it. Obviously, the two of you will be on it. And then we go from there, other folks that should be on this committee. And there may be other policies that obviously you will be dealing with, but as you raise those, obviously, they'll be covered in the Subcommittee and be brought to the School Committee for approval. That's the way we're going to do it, but go right through Mrs. Blais.
We speak often, that will not be a problem.
There we go.
Thank you.
Anybody else with regards to policies at this point?
No, I have a question.
Mrs. Nato.
Number two, cameras. What about cell phones?
That's the cameras that they're referring to. And you also commented about that same meeting during good and unfair. We both got scolded. But the bottom line is...
You might get scolded.
Kind of did, but it was after the meeting, so you don't know. But anyway, I'm a big girl, I can take getting scolded. I did, I started to do a little preliminary research on these issues. And quite frankly, there's a state law in the light that says student electronic devices are not permitted on student property without consent and permission of the principal. And I don't, we don't, procedure in place for a principal to consent to a self-moving on property. But the question is, how would you ever enforce that policy? Because, and if I'm going over my bounds, just tell me and I'll stop. Okay? Essentially, the concern that I have is, I walk in and drop my iPhone X in the box and somebody else walks in and drops in there a cheap Samsung phone. And at the end of the day, when we go to take our phones back, someone takes my iPhone X and I'm left with your Samsung J seven. There's a huge price differential. And how can you secure those cell phones if you enforce that state law that says that no one's permitted to have an electronic device at the high school without Mr. Henderson's permission? We don't have cell phone safes. And quite frankly, as remember this committee, I don't think I would want to spend thousands of dollars on a cell phone safe. It's just not a priority in our district. So, I don't know how we enforce, and that's the problem. The cameras I'm talking about are certainly the cameras that are embedded in our cell phones. And there's just no real way to enforce that state law. Once again, the state law is passed, no team in it. No way to enforce it, no funding provided for the enforcement. And I don't know how else you could possibly collect those cell phones.
I would think that we, one of the things that could be done by the Subcommittee is to determine or reach out to other communities and other districts, what are they doing to enforce this law? But I think the Subcommittee should be dealing with these issues and probably will say it's a great idea, but we can't enforce it. But that's something that you need to investigate and look into.
I know in one district where my parents were from, those schools in South Carolina, their cell phones have to be in their locker and they're only supposed to be used in emergencies if they're contacting parents and they stay up to school or they need a ride out to school or something like that is coming on, but they can't be used in the classroom.
Imagine that during an emergency, if it's a fire, you have to, you may not be able to get to your phone. It gets in your locker.
Yeah, but you don't...
There are issues, there are issues of...
Yeah, but if there's a fire, you're all going to be dismissed, so it's not, you know...
Yeah, but you may be rushing out to a certain area, even if there's an emergency of some kind. But I think that's something the committee should pursue. How we go from there? Any, anyone else? We wish you good fortune on sitting on the committee, Mrs. Kepiscus. Raise the wall, we have to look forward to your reports.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I just have one other thing to say.
Of course.
In policy, sometimes you have a major issue where you almost have to have a Subcommittee born to discuss the major, like when we had modified dress codes and things like that. Parents were involved and they had, they were part of policy, but it's a Subcommittee just on that one issue. Because sometimes what an issue is so in-depth that that is necessary to happen. Good luck, because this is not, this isn't fun, but absolutely necessary.
Obviously, parents could be involved in this Subcommittee. Principals should be involved on the Policy Committee Subcommittee, because it's going to, it's going to be district-wide applications, so it's very important.
And I assume Miss Blais is going to be able to tell me who exactly is already on that committee. So, we'll start from there.
Okay.
And Mr. Burr's as well.
That's right. Anyone else? Dr. McGee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, you have the March Enrollment Census Summary Report on your Chromebook. This is just, again, an update with respect to mainly enrollment to look to see where we are. If you go down to, or if you start at the top, if the grand total is six thousand sixty-nine, that does not mean we have six thousand sixty-nine students sitting in buildings within the district. That means that includes students that are sitting in the buildings of the district, but also students that might be in any out-of-district setting as well. Enrolled in regular public school, if you go down one, two, three lines, we have fifty-nine fifteen. So, you know, just under six thousand. From the last snapshot that we looked at, we're down slightly, maybe about ten or fifteen students. But if you look at last year at this time, in two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen at this time, we are up from those enrollment numbers. Soon, the March, of those, these March enrollment numbers will be critical with respect to, again, state funding. So, we're going to continue as we've been to monitor these numbers. And as I said, we're up from last year at this time. And it really, it really does fluctuate from one to one, you know? And that fluctuation could range from anywhere to, you know, ten students to twenty-five students or so. But as I said, we have seen an increase, strangely enough, in overall, the overall enrollment in the district. That, if, no, I was just waiting if anybody had anything. Again, it's, this is just...
I guess the key one is the, is the in March. It is. That's the, that's the most important point for funding. Is that one of the standing?
Yes, that's correct, Mr. Chairman.
For everything?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's the March snapshot that drives all the, all the enrollment numbers.
Chairman, I just attended the ESL caucus meeting. The state is changing the exit criteria, so they're updating the numbers. It used to be a little under five point zero, now it's going to be five point one. So, we're going to see increase of ESL student population. Also, the old criteria was if an ESL student is in the program for five or more years and we look at disability. So, if we exit kids out of ESL and we can exit them to special ed, it's no longer the case. So, they, they still have to be in ESL. So, we're going to see increase also in special ed and ESL students.
So, one student can be in both?
Yes.
But there's...
We have some now.
No, we do.
Right, but you're going to see changes.
But when we look at total students, six thousand twenty-nine or whatever that number is, those, we're not doubling up on students or...
No.
No, we're not.
They're single students.
Anyone else? I'll make a motion to be received and placed on file in his superintendent's report. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have a motion to adjourn? At eight nineteen.
Present.
Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, everyone, and thank you for attending.